Do you tell me Charlie when we're ready? All set? Thank you Charlie. We need a motion to, to open the meeting.
I'll make a motion to open the, the meeting.
Dan, makes a motion. Dan, seconded by?
Kathy.
Seven thirty-four.
Kathy, seven thirty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Hi, I'd like to welcome everyone to the, uh, Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals. At this, right this time, this is September seventh, two thousand sixteen. My name is Tom Wakefield. On my left is Kathy Franzen, Casey Bailey, Dan McDonald, and, uh, we're, uh, actually very privileged in to welcome, uh-
Back, welcome back.
Welcome back, Mike Woods. Uh, he's gonna fill in for a while till we get another member so that, uh, we give the, the folks a fair share. And, uh, thank you very much, Mike, for volunteering-
You're welcome.
And our secretary is, uh, Julie House. So, the way it goes is we're gonna, we only have one item tonight. And, uh, uh, I'm going to read the item and I believe probably the people are here. Uh, uh, only two people here other than Carol, and I know Carol. And, so why don't you come down to this hot seats and we'll, uh, charge them up for you so we can get the whole truth, nothing but the truth, and, uh, we got stun guns too if we need them. We, we have to really, you know this. So I'm gonna read the, uh, the hearing. Application two thousand sixteen dash six made by Robert and Rachel, and that, is that Gilfillian?
Gilfillan.
Gilfillan. Uh, owners of premises located at thirteen Wood Street, Groveland, and that would be plat eight, lot nine, for special permit for accessory in-law apartment according to all applicable sections of the Town of Groveland zoning bylaws including, section three oh one point eight. So, I'm assuming that you guys are, Robert and Rachel, how's that for?
Yeah, pretty good, yeah.
Yeah, so what's the deal? Tell us what, what you got going on.
Uh, we're just looking for an in-law apartment for my parents.
For your parents?
Yes.
Are they here?
No.
They really wanna, they really wanna be there? We, we, we put them through the, they usually come and we make sure that they, you know, that they really wanna be there. Uh, is, is there one there now in the house?
An in-law, yeah, there's an in-law in place, yeah, like, uh, the starter.
So, do you guys just purchase the house?
Yes.
Okay, that's our thought.
How long ago did you purchase?
July eighth.
Of, of this year?
Yeah.
Well, welcome to Groveland.
Thank you.
Where are you moving from?
Wilmington.
Did you get your tax code yet? That's the real awakening. That's, that's the real welcome. Let's say we don't welcome to Groveland.
Check in the mailbox.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Exactly. As part of the, uh, process, they should apply to be, uh-
There's a lot of vacancies.
For the vacancy on one of the boards.
That's right, that's right. We, we got a vacancies, that's right. The, what, what better place than to have, hey, great idea, yeah.
That stands are doing.
Yeah, we, we, we got a couple of, we got a fill-in here and, and we are looking for members if you're interested. Uh, so tell us, uh, it's been there, and you know the s- the size? I, I gotta tell ya, I read this a while ago, and then I misplaced it, so. Tell me, what, you know the size of it?
Of the accessory?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would say it's maybe nine, nine hundred to a thousand, maybe?
Yeah, no, that's not the right answer. You gotta-
It's at most nine hundred.
Yeah, that's the right answer, yeah.
Is there a plan?
I thought, I thought I saw a plan. Didn't we have a plan?
Yeah, I was looking for a plan too.
I thought I saw a plan.
Didn't they say it was already existing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has it previously-
It was granted back in two thousand four.
It was, it was.
By a previous board.
It was, but it, it's not transferable. Yeah, this is, this is the, uh-
Is it complete? It's, it wasn't, for whatever reason, I thought maybe it was unfinished.
Uh, there's some unfinished space in it.
Okay.
And there's, like, no kitchen.
No kitchen, okay. So you'd be putting in a kitchen?
If we can.
Do, so, uh, did anyone live there pri- do you know whether anyone lived there prior?
Um, there was no in-law use of it prior. It was just a family. Like, two adults, two kids, I think.
So this is, uh, Daniel Guger. Is that who, was the first one, two thousand four?
Mm-hmm.
I believe he was the one that did the initial addition to the house. Initial. To the best of my knowledge.
And the addition is where the in-law is now?
Correct.
Was, was supposed to be, it's attached to the house?
Yes.
I thought I saw, I thought I saw a sketch, but I guess I didn't.
Was there one with the original decision?
Do, do we have, do we have the re- original over there?
I, I just copied the orig- my, the, the, the application and you guys have it now, so.
Well, was there one with the, the original decision from oh four? Did you pull this from the file or anything?
No, they, they gave you all.
Do you have one? Do you have, do you have a file?
It's in the vault.
Oh, it's not over there?
No.
But there was no plan initially with that one, that you recall?
Well, you know what, we can, we can do it a different way. We can do it a reverse way.
Can we just limit the use to nine hundred square feet?
Yep, yep.
Like, what the actual decision is anyway?
We go to plan B here. We'll turn the heat up a little bit, a little higher here.
We were wondering if there was a plan filed with the initial decision or with your initial application.
Do you know the square footage of the rest of the house? I think total, it's thirty-four hundred, thirty-four and change of finished.
It's the greater of, right?
Yeah.
Alright, so it's two eighty-six plus... He's a three-quarter story on the s- like, the second floor, right?
Uh, she's gonna be a sensor's.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's... What does that include the sensor? It probably does because this was, um, cause it says, the half-story is unfinished.
Yes, that's above the garage, that's completely unfinished.
Okay, and then there's a three-quarter story unfinished, which is only, which is twenty-five, four percent of the house? Three-quarter story?
There's like, uh-
Like an attic?
Couple season porch.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, three-quarters.
Is, is the porch on the house or where the accessory is?
Part of the accessory. So, I mean, we can reach it from our deck, or you can reach it from the accessory. But it's not like a full year.
I don't think that counts.
Yeah, like, there's external doors going out to it, exterior, whatever.
It's not heated or does any heating?
It's not heated.
I think when they, cause I, I've looked at these a lot, and I think what they mean is the space that's up here. Like, this is a picture of your house, right? So, I'm thinking what they're talking about is the space up here. Is that like an attic space?
Our house only accessible from the main house.
Okay.
Yeah, that's like a room.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's like, the master bedroom's up, up in that area right there.
Okay, so that, I think that's what they're considering, the three-quarter story.
Well, the accessory part is only the single floor on the first story.
Right, we were trying to figure out the full square footage of the whole house, so, so including the three-quarter story, but it wasn't sure if it was finished or not. So, um, that puts the total square footage, according to the assessor, at, um, three thousand five hundred and sixty-four.
Yep.
So what is, uh, twenty-five percent of that?
Yes.
What's twenty-five percent?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Forgot on the math.
It's like nine hundred, basically.
If my algebra teacher could only hear you guys now, I'll tell ya.
Eight ninety-one?
It's like nine hundred, right?
Eight hundred and ninety-one.
Eight ninety-one, eight ninety-one.
Subtract closet space, right?
It's still under nine hundred.
Whichever is greater, so nine hundred is greater, so it-
Yeah, you can have, you can have, so, 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 yeah, the, the key is, is the nine hundred. Just let me look at this thing here. Do you have anything else that you wanna talk about?
I don't think so.
Anyone here that, to speak? Well, there's only one other one. Did you come to, or did you come to just watch us?
I live across the street.
I know.
Okay.
So you, 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 you gave for autographs, is that?
I'm a little bit down.
You came here for autographs, is that anything?
Right, from the board.
Yeah.
It's a historical document.
Okay, yeah.
So do you have any questions about the project, or?
She would, if she did, she'd ask.
Yeah, yeah, my parents. My father's elderly, so my mom needs help.
Let me ask you que- how, how elderly is he?
Careful.
He's eighty-two.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna, yeah.
Careful.
That was good, good answer.
My mom is young, she's only like sixty-one or something.
Ooh, no. And she's not elderly, so.
No, she's not.
I just come for my fiftieth class reunion, so I, I was gonna see how, how, how much time we'd have with this. I'm ancient, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm ancient. I'm not quite as old as your father.
Where are they living now, with you?
They are right now with, they still have a house, but they are right now with us.
Yeah.
Um, my, my mom needs some pretty good help taking care of my dad, so.
You don't have any, you, you?
No, is it, it's restricted to family, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there's a, in the ordinance it talks about who can be there, so.
Immediate family, I think.
Immediate family, uh-
The bylaw.
Yeah. The bylaws, yeah, whether, yeah.
Can't, it can't be a two-family.
So, uh, do we have any, I, I guess if you don't have anything else, we're all set for a moment, and then we'll just sort of, we'll close the hearing. How, how many, the motion to close the hearing? Motion to close the hearing, do you?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing at a quarter of eight.
Eight, uh, eight, uh, yeah, seven forty-five?
Quarter of eight.
Alright, or, or quarter of eight. Alright, seconded? Casey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How about, uh, a discussion? Do we have any discussion that, let me just see what we got here.
Well, meet the requirements dimensionally, right?
Yeah, I don't thi- yeah, is, is, as long as we'll-
So it's, it's granted by right if they meet the dimensions, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So.
Yeah, it's just a, it's a formality that, that we have to-
Relationship of the occupants, uh, they've met that, so they've met all the requirements.
Let me just...
They're still gonna get a building permit and everything else, so they're gonna build it out, right?
If they, yeah, if they're gonna, if this, if this, have you spoken to the building inspector?
I have, yes. Um, yeah, he said there was rough permits and your, everything was rough done. Um, all the rough permits were signed off on and just gotta get finished.
Okay.
Permits for everything.
The thing missed, uh, cha- I missed the chairman.
Go ahead.
If they add a, a, a bedroom, they're gonna be, uh, septic, uh, septic, uh, requirements, isn't that true?
Y- yeah, uh-
Septic or sewer.
Let me see if it's in here, I believe it is.
Are you on septic or sewer there?
Uh, septic there, but there was no change in the amount of bedrooms in the house. The way they did, did the addition, it was like, basically it was two bedrooms and they got rid of a bedroom, cause it, it walked through to another bedroom.
Was approved for what, three or four?
It was approved for four and there's still four in the, in the house.
So, one's been eliminated?
Yes.
So it's, so it's, uh, so the total, the total is, uh, four, that's correct.
And size for a four-bedroom septic on the, with title five we got when we bought the houses.
You haven't had the copy there with you?
I don't have one on me, no.
Could you get, could you get one to us so we put it in the file?
Sure.
You can just drop it after the clerk and, and she'll give it to you, you know, just, just for the record, so that-
Okay.
Do you want that to be part of the decision?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, uh-
And it's currently four bedrooms, three and a half baths?
Yep.
Or will it, or when the construction is done, it will still be three and a half baths? Is that right, in four bedrooms?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, there's not really any construction.
Yeah, no, it's-
Well, I mean, once it's finished, you'll have, you'll still have four bedrooms, three and a half baths.
Yep.
Okay, that's good.
Okay.
No, I know, but I just, I didn't know if you're adding.
Do you have any other questions, huh? Any, any concerns down here? No? No concerns. Uh, dear, wait a minute, cause, cause, uh, Sam Johnson came up with a, an idea that he wanted us to incorporate, which is a good idea. And I hope I'm gonna do this right. Motion for application two thousand dash six. Application being made by Robert and Rachel Gilfillian, Gilfillian?
Gilfillan, yeah.
Gilfillan, owner of the premises located at thirteen Wood Street, Groveland, plat eight, lot nine, for a special permit for an accessory in-law apartment according to all applicable sections of Town of Groveland zoning bylaws including section three oh one point eight. Uh, and with the following conditions, accessory, excuse me, uh, is that what, is that what you understood, Julie? He wanted?
I just need to put a per on the top there, and it's outside.
Okay, good. Uh, this, accessory in, in-law apartment shall be constructed, uh, to the submitted footprint only. Uh, the accessory in-law apartment shall not exceed the specification of the submitted plans, uh, and I'm gonna put on file. The accessory in-law apartment shall be no greater than nine hundred square feet excluding unfinished basements, workshops, unfinished attics, closets, and garages, garage space. Said accessory in-law apartment cannot be converted into a two-family residence according to the Groveland zoning bylaws. The accessory in-law apartment shall revert back to single-family residence at the change of ownership or primary family rev- family members move out of said residence. All submitted plans will become part of this agreement, and any deviation or changes from said plans will require an additional Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals hearing, uh, relative to proposed changes prior to commencement of said changes. The accessory in-law apartment shall not change the single-family characteristics of the dwelling except for the provisions of additional access or egress. The accessory in-law apartment shall meet all master shares of building codes and comply with current safety, health, and construction requirements before occupancy and every change of occupancy. The applicant shall meet all local zoning bylaws, the applicant shall meet all bylaws and others, the applicant shall meet Groveland Board of Health rules and regulations, which is what they're referring to, Dan, uh, regarding septic. The applicant shall meet all zoning setbacks. No on-street parking, uh, will be allowed, all residents will park off-street on the existing driveway or propose expansion of existing driveway. The owner applicant shall occupy one of the dwelling units of said premises at all times. And now I'm gonna, I'm gonna add one right here, that, uh, applicant to supply. It's called title five?
Yeah.
Title five. And it's, is it an application of title five, what's it called, document?
Certification.
Certification, certification, thank you.
Inspection, uh-
Report.
Okay, inspection report, there you go. Okay, we saw one last time, on, on another project, so, uh, I'm familiar with, with him. The applicant shall allow the Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals to conduct an annual site inspection to verify compliance with said special permit conditions. The Groveland Board of Appeals reverses the right to retain the services of the Groveland Building Inspector during such annual site inspections. Upon change of ownership of said property, the special permit for accessory law apartment and certificate of occupancy shall, uh, occupancy of said accessory apartment shall become null and void. This special permit is subject to recall if any complaints are made by a butters. This special permit is non-assignable, the decision and notice of this, let's see, the decision and notice of decision. Application two thousand sixteen dash six shall be filed and recorded in the Essex Southern District Registry of Deeds and receipt of said transaction delivered to the building inspector prior to the issuance of a building permit for construction of accessory in-law apartment according to said decision. If the rights authorized to the applicant of the property of, uh, by the owner said permit are not exercised within two years from the date of granting of this special permit, which is the filing date with the town clerk of the board's decision, then such s- special permit rights shall become null and void unless a substantial use thereof has commenced, except for good cause, or if, the case of permit construction, if construction has not yet begun by such date except for good cause. And the town clerk shall certify on the copy of the filed decision that twenty days has elapsed since the filing and that no appeal has been filed, or if such appeal has been filed that has been dismissed or denied, a duplicate of said document shall be mailed to the applicant or the owner, and I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the application as, uh, as stated by the chairman.
Uh, seconded?
Second.
Casey, um-
Kathy.
Kathy?
Kathy, not before we're out.
Alright, uh, all those in favor? Five, zero. Now, before you go, I'm gonna have, Julie's gonna explain the whole system. It's, uh, not, not hard, but she can do it quicker.
Um, I'll be talking about the decision within the next fourteen days. And then after fourteen days is a, a twenty-day appeal period. I will send you a copy of the decision, but you need to go to the town clerk's office and get the original decision, bring it down to the registry of deeds, have it stamped.
Okay.
And I will be including instructions along with the coverage decision.
Okay, that's it, thank you. Okay.
Just as a backup.
Congratulations, goodbye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Real sorry.
Good luck now.
I'll need it, it is my in-laws.
Hey, I just did it, I just went through this like, three weeks ago.
Okay, um, we got regulatory items, we got, uh, let me get them here, there we go.
Could I have the Eagle Tribune one back, cause I can add on the bill that I just received?
Yep. We got two, uh, two of these and a minutes. And I did read it. Oopsie, today is, uh, seventh, was my client's birthday? Dan? So you said you don't need me, right? No, we all said, yeah, thank you very much, Mike.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what we needed, your father?
Thanks, Mike.
You're dismissed.
I'm dismissed.
Okay, thank you.
Until the next one.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Wait a minute, how does he get dismissed?
Cause, cause you can't, you can't vote.
He approved the minutes of his own application.
Yeah, I can't, can't.
Mike, are you gonna be on here until they find someone? So I-
I don't know.
Okay, maybe.
I thought, I, well, I thought, if you can't make it, someone else is, uh, is what I heard, but someone will be.
The reason I resigned the first time is because I have all over the world, so I don't know where I'm gonna be, but, I mean, if I'm around, I'll do it.
Okay, good, good. Well, don't, don't give that up, cause, cause I, what I understood was we may have someone else if you couldn't.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if I'm local, I don't, I don't mind.
Okay, good, good. Thank, thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Have a good evening now. Spell my name wrong. Does it say McDonald?
Says Mac.
Mac, oh, instead of Mac? Put an A in there.
Thank you.
What page is it on? Okay, we'll change that. We can sign the back and just change that front. I'm sure it was spelled check. If we read a little faster, we can set a record here.
Do we resign these?
Yes.
Did Dan not wanna sign it?
What? Oh. Huh? It's up by two percent.
Dan, did you not sign these for a reason, or?
I, I thought chairman signed it, I, did I, am I required to sign the minutes of the meeting?
All of us sign it, right?
We all signed it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
The minutes?
No, just the, um, the chairman's.
Okay, okay.
We, we, we need to vote on whether or not we accept that.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're gonna vote on it now. Oh, wow.
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Okay.
What's that?
Seconded by Kathy?
Yes, seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero. Sure you're lefty.
Have been all my life.
That explains it. Okay, now we're waiting for Julie. The mathematician up there. Oh, yeah. The basketball one?
I say good luck.
I learned a lot. Yeah, I say good luck on that one. So the only, the only, uh, we have, uh, some bills here, and let's see, we have the Eagle Tribune, uh, in the amount of four twenty-nine, twenty-five, and then for this particular one, you got the bill for this already? Wow.
Yeah.
It was two fifty-two, fifty, and so that makes a total, correct me, uh, is it six eighty-one, seventy-five? Okay.
From the application?
Yep.
From the apps?
Three.
Right?
Yes.
Yeah. That's not bad.
Two hundred bucks a piece.
That's not bad.
We're still within our three fifty average.
No, we're still, we're still doing good. And then we have, uh, uh, bill for Julie House, uh, in the amount of two forty, two forty-six, thirty-seven. This could be pretty, pretty, uh, quick meeting for you, Charlie. This could be a quick meeting for you.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I'll charge you double.
There you go. That's the way to do it.
Minimum three hours, right?
Yeah, I hope so.
Man, I think that's the law, isn't it? They send you home hours.
Minimum three?
Do we, wait a minute, do we have to make a motion?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have ended it.
Yeah, I was gonna give, give it back, as soon as everyone signed that, uh, yeah.
Sorry.
So we need a, we need a motion to accept the Eagle Tribune in the amount of six eighty-one, seventy-five.
I'll make a motion to-
Casey makes a motion, seconded?
I'll second it.
By Dan, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Four, zero, second one is right here, the second one is Julie House in the amount of two forty-six, thirty-seven, in the motion.
I'll make a motion to-
Casey?
I'll second it.
Dan, seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Four, zero. Okay, do we have any, anything, anything, any old business? Maybe just a quick update on, uh, the zoning bylaws. I understand you're gonna meet next week, is it, or?
Um, I haven't really heard anything. I, I admit, I was supposed to email the planning board and I have not done that, but I understand that they are meeting next week. Um, I originally thought I could go, but I, I'm not sure I can go.
Okay.
Um, but I, I will drop Jim for email, just to.
Okay.
The thirteenth, doesn't it?
The thirteenth, I think.
Supposed to be like Tuesday night?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I, I think I saw the thirteenth.
I think I have a work conference or meeting that I'll have to go to, I think, um, waiting to hear back.
So, do you wanna just try to reschedule it, or do you want me to go anyway?
Um, I mean, it, I don't know how this meeting kinda came up, I assume.
It's probably gonna be pretty preliminary, the first one to set some parameters, and, and I, I, it may be a little different.
If it's on their agenda, I assume that they wanna talk about it some more.
Yeah. Oh, oh, is this their planning board meeting?
I, I don't know, I just got an email from Julie.
I got an email from Denise.
Do they meet on Wednesdays, Carol? Does the planning board meet on Wednesdays, Wednesdays?
I'm not on the planning board.
Did you, I used to meet on Wednesdays?
Probably they meet on Tuesdays.
That's what I thought, yeah.
You met last night.
Right, which is, what I was, what I was emailing you that I was confused about was, I had looked at their agenda for yesterday, and I thought it was on the agenda for yesterday.
Thank you.
So, and I don't see on the calendar that they're meeting next week, so I wasn't clear as to when exactly.
I heard, I heard, so, I, I heard that it was the thirteenth, but I, I don't know who told you that.
I, I got an email from Denise.
Okay.
I, I think maybe.
To notify, um, Kathy.
Yeah, I think I, I did too, I think it was the thirteenth, well, but I, but.
It might be just a special meeting.
Well, yeah, but I also think that, that probably, there's, there's been a change in the dynamics of who's gonna meet, so, uh, so it, it may be just a preliminary to set some parameters, I, I think that, I think it'd be fine if, if, uh, if Kathy.
I think so too, I mean, as long as you're.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Well.
As long as you want to.
Cause that, cause.
Well, we have all the comments that we put together, right?
Yeah.
So, and they have, they have a copy of that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And I, and I read a report from, uh, Sam, uh, Johnson had actually, uh, looked at, and maybe I shouldn't, you know, use his name, but I, I read it, that he read it, and, and he, he was very, very complimentary, and I think it might have been one item that, that, that.
On our comment to me?
Yeah, yeah, I thought it was very, very well-written, very.
Can you forward that to me, so that I have a copy of it before I go to the meeting? So at least I know what I'm talking about?
I didn't lose it, I'll find it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
I'd like to be at least informed.
Yeah, I'll see what I can do, uh.
Walk in blind.
Yeah. What did you make for comments?
We gave you a copy of all the comments.
It was, it was a co- our comment that, that they gave us, and they just, they just, they just reviewed them, that's all.
You have a copy there.
You've got a copy.
What, with the changes in the makeups?
Well, if he was away, wasn't he, did we do that in July?
I missed that meeting.
Oh, maybe you were away.
Yeah, but I thought we had folded.
We had a joint meeting with the.
You were here, cause I was sitting right there, you were sitting right there.
I was at the joint meeting, where I thought you were gonna go away and have a powwow, and.
You haven't had the powwow yet.
We did.
Work out the details on whether or not we're gonna allow dog groomers in town or in city.
We haven't done that yet.
That hasn't been done yet, that's right, that hasn't been done yet.
Well, that has been hashed out.
No.
It hasn't.
No, that's what this is about.
Is this happening in September?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's what they're working on, yeah.
That was what.
Been busy, I didn't email.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
I know it's summertime, but.
Yeah.
It's not gonna make the special town meeting, it looks like.
No, 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 I, that's what I understand, so.
That was always understood, I can't, I thought after that meeting was that it wasn't gonna be.
Wasn't gonna be, that's right, that's right. So, uh, do we, anything else, then, I, I'll, I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Yeah, that would be good, so I can review it before I go in.
Who are you gonna make a little now, is it gonna be Jim Freer? Just Jim Freer?
Just Jim. That's what I said, there's a change, yeah, should I, should I mention that?
From that previous meeting that needed to be added or?
I wasn't gonna.
I'd hold off on it.
Okay, alright, yeah, so, um.
She was just gonna check the board and make sure it's posted.
Okay, good. I like that better with that, in a way, then I have to look at myself.
That's good.
Yeah, I like that twenty-two.
If I go like this, I can't even see the hair, so, that's much better. I was told, I was told to trim the beard, so I did do that.